Would you like to start the meeting now, folks?
It's three pages.
I want to welcome everyone to our Village of Suffolk Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, June 12, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will everyone remain standing for a moment in silence, please? For a gentleman named Joe Coglin, he was a local resident for many years, he was a Vietnam Vet, and he recently passed away. Thank you. Thank you, may sit down. We have upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, July 8, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. And we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, August 5, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Could I have a motion to approve the April 29, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting minutes, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, can I have a second, please?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Also this time, I'd like to do a roll call of participants, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Present.
Deputy Mayor Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Ho.
Present.
And trustee Osborne.
Present.
And Mayor Curly is present. At this point, I would like to, the attorney's not here unfortunately, but I will just take care of his agenda. I would like a motion to authorize Mayor Curly to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the Civil Service Employee Association, Inc., of Village of Suffolk, Unit 8369, Rockland County, Local 844. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Fred, I want to, I'm going to change around the order here, chief? Would you, oh no, let's hold on, I'll be waiting for someone else, okay. Fred, come on up, please, reference to the grant program, what grants we have coming. And we are putting money into the playgrounds, in case anyone's ever in the neighborhood for playgrounds, in the audience.
Just a few participants.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. I just have two items I'd like to talk about tonight. One has to do with Congressman Lawler. The mayor was instrumental in us applying for what's called a community project funding monies. And this is monies to help repair Memorial Drive. We were asking for $1.75 million. What Congressman Lawler did was he went out to all of the municipalities and said, "Okay, give me your projects," and he was going to pick 15 of them to move forward within Congress with the Appropriations Committee. So the mayor, I, Mike Janito, and Charles Swickie, we pulled it together, the information for Memorial Drive, we sent it over to Congressman Lawler, and we were very fortunate that we were one of the 15 that were picked. So right now, it's before the Appropriations Committee, and if they approve it, it's going to go back and forth a little bit. Eventually, hopefully, the Senate and the President will vote on it, will vote on it and then sign it, and we're looking at this to occur by the end of December, all right? And then once, it's actually HUD money that would be coming in, Housing and Urban Development. So then we have to do an agreement with Housing and Urban Development, a little back and forth. So this is a project where we would have the funding actually in hand in the spring of 2025. The next item I want to talk about is the EFC Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. We're applying for a grant to do backup generation at the well field where our potable water supply is, and then also up in Bon Air, where we have a distribution system which helps to pump the water further to the critical infrastructure like Good Samaritan Hospital. So we want to make sure that if something happens to the normal pumping station, that we have a backup generator up there. The approximate cost is a little over a million dollars. The grant is due this Friday, and the grant gives you 60% of the actual funding. So we should know about that probably by mid, what is it, it's May, hopefully by November. All right? I just want to let you know that when we put in these applications, it's not just simply filling out an application, getting a little data, and then submitting it, but there's a lot of work that has to go into it. Just for example, just like on, they asked for letters of support, and just like on that Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant, you know, we had to get letters from some high-level people, like we got it from the Good Samaritan Hospital CEO, we got it from Ed Day, the Rockland County Executive, Michael Lawler, our U.S. Congressman, Bill Weber, New York State Senator, Carl Brubanek, our New York State Assemblyman, we get it like from the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce, and then some residents who were impacted by this and whatnot, and including, oh, we're getting one from, we had one from Bruce Simon. So he's not here, I see. But I just want to let you know that at times, it's a lot more than just an application, but it's gathering information from engineers and doing this and that, so that's it. Any questions?
I just want to point out that I already had a commitment for $1 million from the Drainage Agency for the county, for the memorial drive there, and what we plan on doing is paving it from 202, all the way, all the way down through the whole project. And then we later obtained, we were trying to get money from FEMA, they denied us, so I had some conversations with Congressman Lawler, he was very helpful to us, and he put in for a project for us for 1.7 on that project also, and you know, last year in his commitments, he went 15 for 15, so we're hoping we're one of those 15 for 15 this year. Thank you very much, Fred. Also Parking Lot A, we have a grant for that, and that we already bid, and that we already, there's a bidder, he's almost going to be doing that job soon.
Yeah, we have a $200,000 grant for paving Parking Lot A, which is across the street from the old Ole Ole.
Correct.
So that's on the agenda tonight, Charles, the bids.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's cool, yeah, we got the bids, yeah, 141, and it comes under, the bids come under what we got the grant for, so we're good. Thank you very much, Fred, these kids want to go.
Thanks, Fred.
Move it along, Fred.
Move it along.
I'm going to jump the, I want to change the order here, if I could, I'd like to do the Police Department first, because these kids will promise ice cream by their parents after this, so I want them to take the ice cream.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board members. In the month of May, the Police Department responded to 982 calls for service. I wanted to make the Board aware of a selective enforcement effort that we, the department participated in last month, from May 23 to June 2. During this time period, we deployed additional officers to specifically enforce seatbelts, restraint violations, as well as targeting motorists who were driving while impaired. This was part of an annual statewide Buckle Up New York Click It or Ticket campaign. During this time period, the additional officers deployed conducted 67 traffic stops, resulting in 80 summonses and three arrests. The additional patrols were funded through a grant from the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee, which the department applies for and receives annually. I have three agenda items tonight for the Board's consideration. My first request is that regretfully, I ask the Board to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Gregory Whitty. Officer Whitty was our department's accident reconstructionist and brought a vast amount of knowledge and resources to our village throughout his 13 years with the department. He was instrumental in many serious accident investigations. Officer Whitty is moving to the state of Florida and will be missed by all of us at the department, so at this time, I respectfully request the Board accept his resignation.
Can I have a motion to accept the resignation of Officer Gregory Whitty, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, second, please?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Second trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. My second request is in regard to grant funding. The Police Department applied for a grant funding through the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services for their law enforcement technology solicitation. The purpose of this grant is to fund law enforcement technologies such as software, hardware, and surveillance systems. We were awarded $74,500 to be utilized for fixed surveillance cameras, which will cover the downtown business district. Lieutenant Martinez and Sergeant York were instrumental in researching and applying for this grant, which will allow us to install top-notch surveillance equipment, which will act as both a deterrent to crime and a valuable resource for our investigations. It should be noted that this project is fully funded by the grant and does not require any matching funding from the village. At this time, I respectfully request that the Board authorizes the acceptance of this grant funding.
Can I have a motion to authorize the acceptance of Division of Criminal Justice Service 2020, 2024 Law Enforcement Technology Grant, please, in amounts of $74,500? Motion, please?
Motion.
Trustee Albert.
Made by trustee Albert, second, please?
Second trustee Ho.
Second made by trustee Ho, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. My last agenda item, I'm sure all of the Board members recall, our last meeting, the Board nominated Mr. Walden Cuevas to be considered for the position of full-time police officer to fill a currently budgeted vacant position. Mr. Cuevas has since been cleared by the Rockland County Department of Personnel for appointment. At this time, I would ask Mr. Cuevas to come up and join me at the podium. Walden Cuevas was born in the Dominican Republic in 1990 and immigrated to the United States in 2006. He attended school here in Rockland County and obtained his US citizenship in 2017. In 2021, Mr. Cuevas was hired by the New York City Police Department, where he attended the Police Academy and was assigned to the busy 44th Precinct in the Bronx. Mr. Cuevas reads, writes, and speaks Spanish fluently, which the Board is all aware is an extremely valuable asset to both the residents of the Village of Suffolk and to the Police Department. We believe that the training and experience Mr. Cuevas brings from the NYPD, as well as his bilingual fluency, will make him a valuable asset to the Village of Suffolk and its Police Department. For that reason, it is my honor to respectfully request that the Board appoint Mr. Cuevas to the position of full-time police officer.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Cuevas is, seems like a fine gentleman, his qualifications are, come in highly recommended, and he's an example of the American dream, if I may say, all right? We're lucky to have him, you know, we're lucky to have him, you know, with the speaking and writing and fluently, and at this point, I'm proud to make a motion to appoint Walden Cuevas to the position of police officer full-time, Suffolk, New York. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Walden Cuevas.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, and then, go ahead, right here. Congratulations, Walden.
That's awesome, Danny, here goes the show, here goes the show. It's at the place, it's right, here it goes. That's great, what a night, what a night, it's great. How are you? Good, how are you?
Wait, you still have to.
You need a wide, wide lens. Everybody, ready? One, two, three.
I know, you do.
Christmas at Walden's house.
Yeah. Be a blast, don't you think?
Congratulations, Walden, good seeing you.
Ice cream!
Ice cream, all right.
Ice cream! Ice cream, all right, y'all!
Awesome.
Don't be saying next month.
Yeah, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're all going to be cursing you.
Can we bring up the fire department, please? Chief? Chiefs, you guys want to, are you done, chief? No, fire department, no, fire department, I said.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to, so what we have is, I have the chief here, a couple of chiefs here, and they're going to make, you can stand up if you like, whatever you want, okay? They're going to make a little presentation to us in reference to a fire truck, that they've been, spent many, many hours looking at it, reviewing, and I asked them to come in front of, to kind of the Board, explain some things to the Board, and also so the public can know, you know, being transparent, okay? I'm also going to recommend to you guys, at some point, you know, between now and the next monthly meeting, if you could someday have like an open house at the Firehouse, where people can go by, and some of the guys can say, hey, this is how this works, and this is that, you know what I mean?
Sure, that sounds great.
It'd be a plus, you know, for the Ridge, not just for, not just so the Board members can understand it, so the public gets a clearer understanding too, and I think when you explain it to them, I think that puts it clear in their head, and they're, I find people more supportive of things then, huh? And we like to be a little inclusive there, so if you'd like to, go ahead, chief.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go over the other agendas, other items ahead of my agenda?
Yeah, do that first, go ahead, yeah.
Do that first, okay. So first, I am asking the, well, first of all, good evening, Mayor and Village Board, how are you? I'm looking for the Village Board approval to authorize the revised mutual aid plan for Rockland County. There are subtle revisions, many changes were made grammatically and visually. Part E, they added the term Fire District in, part H, as requested by, was added in, so it's very subtle differences for our mutual aid plan here in Rockland County. So approximately every five years, the county coordinator does revise this plan, and he asks for approval by resolution from Village Boards and Fire Districts.
Sure, no problem, so I'll do that now, okay? Can I have a motion? A motion approving the Rockland County Mutual Aid Plan, please? Motion, please?
Motion trustee Albert.
Made by trustee Albert, second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Great, thank you. Secondly, on the agenda, I would like to ask the Board's approval to accept Joseph Hunt as a new member of the Volunteer Host Company Number One.
Can I have a motion to accept Joseph Hunt as a new member of Volunteer Host Company One, please? Motion, please?
Trustee, okay, I'm sorry.
Motion trustee Ho.
Motion made by trustee Ho, second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Aye. Little late on that one, sorry.
So were you opposed, or?
No, no, I said aye, no, no, not opposed, sorry.
This is just, again, this is just, feel free, you know, if you have any questions, an educational thing.
Absolutely.
Explain what you did, the process you did, you know, the hours it took, the.
Absolutely.
You've got a committee of about 10 people, is that fair to say?
Approximately, yes, nine, right?
Yeah, approximately 10 people. Yeah, okay, all right, go ahead, just go ahead, feel free to.
Okay, so over the last few days, I prepared a presentation as well as documentation, if anyone's interested or has any questions. Forgive me, I'm not the best at public speaking, but here goes. I stand before you tonight to restate again to the Board and to inform the village residents of the need to replace our 2002 Suffolk Aerial Platform, 19th Tower, which is at the end of its operational lifespan. Years ago, an apparatus fleet evaluation was performed for the Suffolk Fire Department by Tom Chand, a 46-year veteran in the fire service with 28 years of experience in various sales and engineering jobs for multiple fire apparatus manufacturers. He has also worked with the U.S. Navy and U.S. Marine Corps and Emergency Service, I apologize, sorry. He has also worked with the U.S. Navy and U.S. Marine Corps, fire and emergency services, preparing bids, specs, and conducting final inspections for their new fire apparatus. Michael Wilber was also involved with creating the fleet evaluation, who has served with the FDNY Apparatus Purchasing Committee, who worked with the FDNY as a career firefighter and lieutenant for a combined of 27 years, and is also a volunteer firefighter. Both Mike and Tom are both contributing editors to Firehouse Magazine and Fire Apparatus Journal, as well as senior partners of EVR, a company that conducts fire protection surveys and serves as a consultant for fire apparatus fleet evaluations. As per their evaluation, 19th Tower was due for replacement and delivery in 2020. Climbing repair costs on parts and labor for an aging truck in conjunction with the never-ending quest to find qualified establishments to repair our apparatus at a reasonable price within a reasonable timeframe have forever been a challenge, more so in recent years. Maintenance and repair costs and downtime for this piece of apparatus will continue to escalate as the systems of this truck, engine, body, and chassis, all grow and age. At a certain point, the, for the apparatus with 20 years plus of service, the repairs rapidly and exponentially grow. Safety is our number one priority of our members and potential rescue victims when their lives are suspended up to 100 feet in the air. Also, to remain in compliance with NFPA 1901 guidelines, the overwhelming reality of the current situation warrants the replacement of this apparatus. 25 years of service is the maximum recommended service life for a tower. Now, in present time, our 2002 Suffolk is 22 years old, and with a three-to-four-year lead time for manufacturing a piece of apparatus such as this, time is of the essence. With new EPA emission standards for diesel equipment set to roll out in 2027, the pricing of new apparatus will only continue to climb due to more complex emission system requirements. An esteemed group of individuals consisting of current chiefs, ex-chiefs, current captain and lieutenant, and individual members with approximately 50 years of service in Suffolk Fire Department, was assembled as the committee responsible to research and generate the apparatus specification. The total experience within the group can be totaled in hundreds of years, all served as members of the Suffolk Fire Department. Since May of 2023, the committee has thoroughly researched different potential candidates for manufacturers and apparatus that would best suit the complex structural layout of the village. Some examples of this layout specifically, excuse me, for a second. Some examples of this layout specifically, which makes firefighting difficult, as we all know, consists of residential areas on narrow roadways, mid-rise buildings in tight quarters and narrow driveways, taxpayers on Lafayette Ave with various construction types and entry points, Lafayette Theater, Five Oakdale Manor, heavy timber churches on Washington, and apartment complexes such as Stonegate and Bon Air, just to name a few. In the last five years, multiple mid-rise buildings have been constructed around the Village of Suffolk with future, with future projects in the queue. Preparing for the upward expansion of the village in the upcoming years is imperative to keep in mind when purchasing this piece of apparatus. One of the largest buildings in the village, which poses our greatest challenge if a large incident were to occur, is Good Samaritan Hospital. The hospital, one of two in the county, consists of seven stories, multiple entry points with narrow driveways, and up to 250 patients and 150 staff members at any given time would be a large-scale operation. It would be paramount for an aerial platform to be present to evacuate ambulatory patients from the roof if all other means of egress were blocked by fire or collapse. The research performed by the committee consisted of attending Harrisburg Fire Expo, long hours viewing, driving, and critiquing local fire apparatus from surrounding departments, as well as departments as far as Bedford Hills and West Harrison in Westchester, and Islet Terrace on Long Island. As a result of the countless hours of research, the committee decided the apparatus that would best suit the village needs and its residents would be the Seagrave Aerial Scope. To reinforce a few key reasons, the versatility and maneuverability of the apparatus is paramount. Given the challenges in the village that we face as firefighters, the proper equipment for the job is unquestionable. The safety features for the firefighters riding in the cab that are offered with the Seagrave, hands down, lead the industry. The craftsmanship of the Seagrave apparatus is second to none, as I've learned over the last 19 years firsthand. All three engines we currently have, starting with 192000, built in 2005, and our Tiller 1999, all bear the Seagrave name. Before my time as a firefighter, our first horse-drawn trust-frame hook-and-ladder was a Seagrave, built in 1902. Next after that was a 75-foot tractor-drawn aerial, built in 1937, also built by Seagrave. The operational life of the aerial scope can be stretched up to 30 years, which is on average five years longer than the conventional aerial platform due to its robust construction that's been utilized for tower ladders in New York City since 1964. As a professional mechanic on heavy equipment, aside from volunteering as a firefighter for the last 19 years, I understand the inherent cost of building a one-off piece of apparatus. It takes time, as well as a well-articulated committee, to see the process through. Most paid departments and companies that design trucks for their fleet have an engineering department dedicated specifically to this process, which adds to the cost furthermore. Fortunately, we don't charge very much as volunteers. Lastly, the total cost, including the apparatus in its entirety, equipment on the apparatus, mounting the equipment, radios, pre-con, and the final inspection, all factors into the final price. The grand total to replace the 2002 Suffolk Aerial Platform with a Seagrave Aerial Scope, as per the original HGAC contract pricing, is approximately $2,949,000. I know this may seem shocking, and some may debate the need for this apparatus, but it's my duty as a chief of this department to ensure that we are self-sufficient within our village to provide the fire protection for our residents. As a stakeholder in the village, born and raised Suffolk resident and taxpayer raising a family, I believe the benefit of replacing this apparatus is well worth it, even if one life is saved in the truck service to the village over the next 30 years. There is no price tag too great to save a life for this department, and for this department to be afforded the best equipment to do so. At this time, be glad to take any questions that you may have.
So I understand there's another Tower truck that is newer, can you tell me about that?
Yes, 2010 Tiller, so 1999, was purchased in 2010. Slight, well, actually, different configuration, it is a ladder truck, it's an aerial device, however, the application is very different for the Tiller. Tiller is predominantly for residential areas, to get in, get our members in, do a quick search and get them out, the Tower is for more commercial structures. The Tower can, can go to commercial, to residential fires, however, you know, around the village, as I had named, there's an exceptional amount of structures that do require a tower ladder, for various reasons.
But you're saying that would be mostly commercial structures?
Not necessarily, it would be Stonegate, Stonegate, Bon Air, anywhere where there's not restrictions with telephone wires or power lines.
I see.
The tower ladder would probably be more likely to go to first. The residential streets are, like in the west ward and in the center section, are very narrow, so that would be probably, be the ladder truck, the 99, that would go first. But the Tower goes right behind it, because it carries eight guys, it carries hundreds of feet of ground ladders, and all kinds of equipment, so it's not just for downtown, it's for all over the village. And it depends, during the day, we might only, 99 takes two drivers, the tower ladder only takes one. So during the day, with manpower issues in today's society, the tower ladder might get out first to go to a residential fire, and it's still very versatile and very removable in the residential areas.
Any other questions?
You checked, and again, you checked mainly to -- you narrowed it down to two different rigs.
Yes.
That made -- rigs meaning fire trucks, okay? I'm a retired fireman from the city, so I use the terminology that I knew.
I know what you mean.
That I knew, so I want the public to understand. So you really checked two -- and they're fairly comparable in price, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
But it's known out there that Seagrave is the better of the two.
Hands down, yes.
Is the better of the two.
For a multitude of reasons.
Even as far as mechanical, is it fair to guess?
Safety first and foremost. Seagraves have a welded stainless steel body, airbags. They come with airbags. The Suffolk, I believe, are bolted together, so in the event of, you know, a crash, the Seagrave, 100%, I would, if it were my family in it, I'd prefer to have them in a Seagrave.
Right.
Not that they would ever ride in it, but you understand.
Correct, correct. And this rig wouldn't actually, we wouldn't actually start, well, this you may not know, but through the finance, I know, we wouldn't actually start paying for this rig for approximately four years when the rig--
We were told when we ordered the truck, the build time is approximately 1,400 days.
Yes.
From the contract to build.
Almost four years, correct?
Yes.
So, and by that point, we definitely will have a Nevada's property also built, okay? We will have an updated Regeneron building built, okay, which both of those things will bring more taxes. Early on, I was, when they were talking about doing the Nevada's project, I was approached by a certain fireman about maybe seeing if they would buy us a fire engine. But the reason I didn't go that direction because I knew what -- then I let the fire department go and talk, but what they would have wanted, they wanted such a great tax deal that it would have been profitable, more profitable for us, to take the full taxation, which we will be getting for the Nevada's, the property, which is Brookfield. We have not agreed to any tax deal, nor do we plan on, okay? So that's why I didn't see the reason to go and try to get a fire engine from them, a fire truck, shall I say, when I felt it was financially beneficial to get full taxation because we won't just have, when buildings like that come in, more money has to go to the water department, the sewer department, the police have extra work, you know, so there's a lot, there's other things that go into play. So it is an expensive purchase, as we all are well aware of that, but that's why I think it's good that we keep the public involved. We do this day where they come and look, and you talk to them.
Absolutely.
We'll advertise it well. We know since COVID, the price of everything has gone, has skyrocketed, so it's not like we can get it for, we can get this for a billion dollars less, okay? If there was a way to get it for a billion dollars less, we'd be having, you know, maybe different conversations.
Yes.
Let's go here. I don't see that, with what I've read and what I see so far, that's not applicable, huh? New Rochelle had bought one of these rigs about a year, a couple of years ago, actually, I think, and they--
Substantially cheaper.
It wasn't that much, it was only $100,000, $200,000 cheaper, actually.
Over the last couple of years, it's gone up.
Yeah, it wasn't as bad, it wasn't as bad as you might think, okay? I think it's good we have a conversation here. I think Steve has brought up some good, like, so the public understands, there's been questions already approached to these firefighters, and they have always come back and answered them before us, okay? Steve has had, I got to tell you, Steve's had some great questions, Steve Albert's had some great questions, Joe Corrigan, you know, to me, and everyone has had a good conversation here after reading the thing, so there's been conversations amongst us about these different things, so this is not, you know, the only thing, but, and there may be more questions, so I'd like to bring it back at the next meeting. This whole topic, again, we're going to bring it back, but I think it's important that we get out there, that, you know, go down and see firefighters, give example there, and as long as you guys supply donuts and coffee, I'll come.
You're buying.
All right, so we thank you, we may have more questions, we thank you for coming, we thank you for volunteering, we thank the service. I personally have on my phone, I see all the calls that you do, I know when you go out, I usually, you know, like, it goes aloud to my texts, so I know.
Today was a rough day.
I met you out last night, so I know, I see what goes on, you're running around a little bit today, so I didn't know if that was for the barbecue party or the fire, so, I'm kidding, there was no barbecue party. That was a joke, so, but we do appreciate your service here, we're just doing our due diligence, okay? And we, like I said, we may have more questions, but we do thank you, and we thank you for letting us know, and if the public has any questions on this, we want them to feel free to email us anything they want, or even come to the next meeting and say something. And even right now, if somebody has a question now, they want it, even though it's not necessarily public, you know, session, if anyone has a question now, they're more than welcome to come up and ask it while these guys are here, so they can answer it. Yeah, come on up, yeah, come on up. Okay. Since they're here, no, we might have since they're here, but I'd rather them answer the questions.
Okay. I know we need to fire apparatus, so it's, there's really no decision to make here. It's just a question, if they go into contract now, is that price locked in?
Yes, yes, it's locked in.
Well, that's a big question.
We have to send out for a 30-day bid price, and then it would be locked in, yes, Jim. So we'll know the exact price within the short time.
Go ahead.
We'll know the exact price before the next meeting.
Okay, and it would be locked in when you make the--
It'd be locked in, the price is locked in now, which you receive about 400 days from now.
Okay. Second question, and this might be in Mike's area, is there any way to assess Good Sam and the Highrisers, like the new owners of the Avon Building? Because this truck is being bought mostly for those particular buildings. Is there a legal way to do that, Mike? To put an assessment on the Highrisers?
The last you had is really a question for Bill with Terry.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, he's not here.
I've asked Terry, I've already asked Terry to review that, because actually, Steve Albert--
Yes, I discussed this already with the mayor.
Steve Albert had suggested that at all, you know what I mean?
It's nice to hear more than one person feeling the same way.
Steve Albert has, I don't know if that could be, but I will tell you this, like, Nevada's is going to be paying full taxation.
That's a win for, we know that's a win for--
No, but I'm saying, I know, Jim, because I want to address it to this question, so you're asking a question, and the public hears it too, so they're going to, they're going to be full taxation. I can't say you're paying taxation, plus taxation to them. Whereas the hospital, it's a different angle, we may be able to go talk to them and say in time, can you contribute to this, like you get the lump sum payment from certain people, so that we can do. There's nothing wrong having those conversations, okay? Whether we can legally, Terry's actually looking into it.
All right.
Because you're defining who is, is it just a commercial building, or who's it necessary for, you know, so I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can do that at this point.
All right, well--
But we are, we are looking into it.
At least it's being looked into.
We're looking into it because Steve Albert had, and that's why I said Steve Albert had some good questions, I appreciate it, as Joe Corrigan and Ms. Hoag and Clark did too.
And my last question is, we've in the past sold vehicles that we no longer needed to smaller areas. Do you think there's going to be a worth for that truck?
Definitely be worth for that.
Okay, so--
The moment, 20-plus years it's been here.
I mean, there's two yeses and a possibility.
Yes, and it would be awesome, I would, we don't have a possibility.
No, no, and it's a couple of years out.
Yes.
We'll be getting money out of that, Jim. We'll be getting money out of that rig also.
Private companies that will buy it from us, and then they will sell it.
Resell.
Yes.
All right.
But one of the other gains is, one of the other gains is that you won't be, as things get older, I know as I get older, you have to spend more on healthcare for me personally.
More maintenance on the vehicles.
A lot of copays. So what happens is, you will, you should be able to eliminate some of the repair because you have a new, brand-new rig. So that's, there's many factors that come into it, it's not just the true cost. Now, also, there's actually, the way we would do that is that we would finance, we will finance that over many years also.
It's a bond.
So, and I'm just going to use a number, it's not the exact number, somewhere around $200,000, $200,000,000 per year, it'd be financed into the budget, there won't be one lump sum payment, so the people who are using it all those years will be paying it for the years they're using.
Will be contributing.
Correct. So it will not be, it will not be next year, boom.
No, no, it's never, a figure like that is never a lump sum. You got to bond.
So, this board, listen, the board respects the fire department and their concerns and what they do, and we do have a lot of desires to do this for them, we just think it's important to finish the education of the public as well as us, and I think we'll be sitting here next month with, I think, a final decision, and I think a fairly good final decision, I'll say it that way.
No, I mean, you got to be in favor of safety, Mike.
Right.
You can't ignore safety.
No, you're right.
For them and the public.
Yes, I think it's all looking good, so we appreciate them coming, we appreciate all the answers they've been, we have another chief that just showed up in the back here, I know unfortunately, okay, he don't like talking, but, so that way, he should come to the mic, so, no, I'm just kidding. But another chief, another chief council, all three chiefs are here right now, that's a good sign, and our past chief, Jeremy Coffers, in the back, all right? And that's kind of where, that's kind of where it's, so, thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Great, thank you.
Real quickly, Mayor, if I could just, real quickly, Mayor, you've been very helpful, Mr. Mayor, guided me a little bit, some of the questions, but I want to thank you, Vinnie, because I did reach out to Vinnie, Mayor, after we spoke, and I want to thank you for that info, and you were very helpful with some of my questions, and if anybody in the board really hasn't maybe seen the trucks, I stopped in one day when I was just walking by, just to explain it, and even on the PD, as much as I dealt with the fire department, I did not know all the stuff you guys did, what you had, and the difference of those two trucks, I just never knew it, so I want to thank you for taking the time for me.
You're welcome, anyway.
No, you did, it was very eye-opening, and I do appreciate it.
Absolutely, no problem, and I invite anyone else that wants to come down, just, sometimes it's easier, I'm a visual learner, if it's in front of me, and it kind of clicks, and you're like, okay, I get it, you know, so--
Thank you, Chief.
Feel free.
Thank you, Chief, and Clark really stopped in for a free cup of coffee, he didn't go in. That's why I really went there, he wanted free coffee. You had none. Thank you, folks, very much.
Culture Recreation, Kathy, please.
Good evening, everybody. So a few things that we have coming up, we have yoga in the park, we've had two Monday nights so far, we've got two more Monday nights in June at 6:30 over at the gazebo. Clifford Theater is starting in a couple of weeks, we're going to be showing the Addams Family this year, we're very excited for it, it's going to be a lot of fun. The performances are on Friday night, August 2nd, and Saturday, August 3rd. The pool is opening, we are starting, we have started registrations, and the pool is opening on Saturday, the 29th. Again, registrations are starting, if anyone tonight would like to get their pool pass updated, we have registration until 9:00 PM this evening upstairs, and then we have more dates coming up. Family Day at the Pool will be on Sunday, July 14th. Swim lessons registration will be held on Thursday, June 20th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We have summer concerts in the park, we had one this past Friday, Reflections, the Big Band, and then we have on Friday, June 28th, Seeing Red. On Thursday, July 11th, Eighth Grade Science. On Thursday, July 18th, Kurt Gallagher, the kids' concert, it's always a fun evening, and then we're going to finish up the season on Thursday, July 25th, with Reflections, the Big Band again. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Kathy, just make sure that we do have hula hoops for this year, for the contests and stuff.
We have fancy hula hoops this year, Mayor.
And we could appreciate that, because the chief of police is very upset you didn't give him his own, so he was upset at you. So thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to have a motion, open up the public comment period, please. Motion open up public comment, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please.
Second trustee Albert.
Made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Ballot motion passes. Anyone have anything to speak about?
These are all strong voices.
That's a way.
The scope of Memorial Drive that you foresee with the money that Mike Lawler is trying to acquire for us?
Yes. Excuse me?
I want to know the scope of work--
The scope of work is actually, I'm having one piece, the county actually looking at it right now for me with the first million, but as I talked to Charles Zawicki, our intention is to, is to, it's been mentioned over time about the curvature on your side of the road, so I think it's important to pave it, and they have equipment now that actually, like when we did the B lot, you saw, when they paved it first, that the water, you know, was going to place, then they went back, they used their machinery, or their fire, solar, however they do it, okay, and they can come with a better, so it doesn't, so it tilts away--
Material.
So it tilts away from your house, that's what our intention is doing, Jim.
Okay.
To do it from that end, all the way around the park, with sidewalks and lights, that's the intention.
Do you think they will be able to shore up that right side on the river?
I do, I went there with the, with Ms. Altieri, and he, from the county, the Commissioner of Drain and A.C., and what they do with that is, and they do a rip wrap, Jim, is what the initial thought is, a rip wrap.
I'm familiar.
They do a original rip wrap there, and we actually, you know, asked for lights and sidewalks too there.
Okay, and here's, this is going back a few years, but at some point, I was told that they had a million dollars for the village for this project.
They never had the million dollars, they never even had a capital project set up until--
No, no, they were waiting to be addressed on it, but I understood, and this came from somebody you just mentioned--
Yes.
--that they were trying to put aside a million dollars towards that project.
They did, I did, they put aside a million dollars.
Okay.
I talked to Ms. Altieri, the Commissioner of Drain and A.C., not too long ago.
Yeah, that's who I had gotten my information from.
That's correct, yeah, they hadn't had it, they actually didn't have the capital project set up.
No, 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 they were trying to do that.
So it's about, right now, we're counting on approximately $2.7 million, okay? You know, listen, we're trying to get our fair share of money from government agencies because this village pays a lot of taxes at the government agencies, so I feel it's been estimated that the project can be done for approximately that.
Oh, that was going to be my next, do you have any idea what the approximate cost is going to be?
Yeah, approximately $2.7 million.
All right, well, if that's the case, then it's not coming out of our pockets.
That's, well, that's correct, but it's going to be over, but it is, I'm sure--
Yeah, you did overrun.
I trusted Mike Giannino, that will get us through this one, to help us out somewhere, somehow. If not, then it's up to him, Fred Rela, to go and beg somewhere else.
But between the two of them, they'll figure it out.
That's correct.
All right, another question, this is on Good Sam. There's a desperate need for more handicap parking at the MOV, Medical Office Building.
Okay, I--
There's very few, I mean, there's one line--
I don't know what's there, I can--
Well, I was there today.
No, I can have a conversation with him and reference that, yes.
And the only spots that are available are close to Hemian.
Right, okay.
And if you're handicapped--
Yes, right. Luckily, you're in great shape, Jim. Luckily, you're in great shape.
Well, for my age, I guess I am. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for coming, Jim.
Can I have a motion, please, to, do I see anyone else who wants to speak? Me and I see none, can I have a motion to close the public comment period?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, I got a second, please?
Second trustee--
Second made by trustee Og, all in favor?
Aye.
Ballot motion passes. Charles, Public and Public Works, please.
Mayor, did you want me to take these individually?
Why don't you read them all, and then I'm going to do a consent agenda, Charles, on items A through F, but I also want to point out that we, on the one area there, there's a lot of roads--
Give us a favor, I feel like this is--
These are ones that will be paved, okay?
Thank you.
We have a list of, we have a list of roads that we're going to be paving, so we, I'll go back and mention those when we're done, Charles, all right? So go ahead and go through, read A through, and then I'll do a consent agenda, I know it's just, I won't do it on G.
Okay, item A, requesting authorization to award the sewage treatment plant UV replacement project, general contract to Capola Services, Ringwood-- Replacement Project General Contract to Coppola Services, Ringwood, New Jersey, in the amount Item B, requesting authorization to award the Sewerage Treatment Plant UV Replacement Project Electrical Contract to Fanshawe Inc., DBA Rockland Electric.
Let me, let me just interrupt, Charles, for one second.
Yes.
What, what those A and Bs are, that's final disinfectant, before they, the wastewater enters into the river, okay? So that's something that we're, we have a 40-year-old system there, okay, and that's, that's what that's about, okay? I know some of us have talked about it, I just making sure the public knows too. I'm sorry, Charles, go to Steve.
Okay, um, in the amount of $56,000. Item C, requesting authorization to award the Parking Lot A Pavement Improvements Project to DS Meyer Enterprises LLC, Waldwick, New Jersey, in the amount of $121,900. Item D, requesting authorization to award the Parking Lot A Drainage Improvement Project to DS Minor Enterprises LLC, Waldwick, New Jersey, in the amount of $46,500.
And item C and D are a grant that we received, Fred talked about it, I talked about it earlier, maybe with Fred or sometime, that's a grant that we received, and there's also money there for the engineering costs also, that was a $200, $200,000 grant, as I recall. Go ahead, Charles, thank you.
Okay, um, item E, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Village of Sufferin Roadway Improvements Project Phase 14, with a due date of June 28th, 2024, at 2:30 PM. Item F, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Village of Sufferin 2024 Right-Away Improvement Project, with a due date of June 28th, 2024, at 3:00 PM.
Okay, at this point, can I have a motion for consent agenda for items 10A to, 10F, please, motion, please?
Joe Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second trustee-
Second made by trustee Al, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, uh, rec- uh, item G, requesting authorization to establish the position of senior clerk typist in the Department of Public Works.
I have, can I have a, um, a motion, please, to establish the position of senior, we have someone in Charles' department there who has actually strived to work very hard, you know, Kirk not there? And she, she's very knowledgeable, um, and, uh, we, we have the position of the union in CCA, so just establishing it with the county personnel, uh, so, I'm motion to establish the position of senior clerk typist in the Department of Public Works, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks, Mr. Janito, Frederick, please.
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, three resolutions for your consideration, the first one, uh, being a bond resolution associated with the, uh, water system, uh, emergency generators, that's the grant that Fred had spoken about a little bit earlier, so this bond resolution, it's been amended a couple of times, but, uh, in this particular case, it's coming up to, to the estimated cost of the project, and of course, if we do get the grant, that'll finance 60% of the actual cost of the project. Now, we'll need a roll call vote, Mayor.
Can I have a motion, uh, for, for the Village of Sufferin, you're adopting a June 12th amendment bond resolution, adopted on October 25th, 2025, roll call vote, can I have, uh, trustee Albert, please? Yes. Trustee Corrigan, please?
Yes.
Trustee Hope, please?
Yes.
Trustee Osborne, please?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly votes yes.
Mayor, the next two items, you can take in a consensus vote, uh, essentially, one is to transfer money from the sewer contingent account to the administrative contractual account for the, uh, purchase of an operations, development of an operations and ma- and, uh, maintenance manual for the sewer system, that's required under a consent order. Uh, the other thing is to close project 2024001, which is our water well number five, as you may recall, we were only going to go forward with that project if we received a grant, uh, we did not receive an award for a grant on the project, there was a minor amount of money that was spent, uh, for the engineering, uh, report that we required to make the application for the grant, and we're essentially going to move water, uh, money from the water fund to the, uh, project to close it. Now, one last thing on that particular one, that was supposed to be on our April, uh, board agenda, and somehow got missed, in any event, we're, um, asking that we do that effective for the May 31st, 2024 fiscal year.
Uh, please, can I then have a motion for consent agenda for, uh, items 11B and C, motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janito. Um, at this point, I don't see any reason for executive session, in case anyone else does. Okay, um, I'll, I'll do my, uh, the trustees, have any statements or anything I talk about?
I just want to, um, thank Public Works, I, I had a lot of, I don't know if they'd called them complaints, but questions in my neighborhood in Foxwood area, that the pond sprinkler, whatever it's called in the middle, looked terrible for a long time, and I dropped by lately and it looks great, so thank you for fixing that.
We ordered a new one, we got it in, and we installed it, it was good, so-
The other one was just sort of sputtering and, yeah, very good, looked terrible.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Anyone else, we're all good?
All good.
All right, and at this time, I'd like to do, uh, uh, we, we work into different recreation equipment, you know, money that's coming out of our, uh, money and recreation land fund, okay, so, uh, Kathy and I know, Steve had talked to me about it, and Clark also, so we, we were able to do a bid to Sourcewell, so I'd like to have a, and this will go, uh, in, in the park, across from, um, uh, across from Leo Lyden Firehouse, or the Dare Reef, the, uh, Jim Giantino Dare Reef, right across from that, and, oh, I'm sorry, Clark, I apologize, I made a mistake, I'm sorry, and, uh, let them fight it out. Um, so, uh, and, uh, so I'd like to have a motion to, uh, to, to approve that, that purchase, um, and it'd be, the, the purpose is gonna be outdoor equipment, there's a beautiful walking park there, a lot of people use it, but a lot of suggestions for residents to do, you know, outside, outside exercise things, so that's what we're doing here, it'll go in a, you know, section there, and it's the right place for it, so.
How would, you know, when there's bad weather and whatnot, what will protect it?
It's made for outside, it's outside, it's outside equipment, all right? So, gentlemen, you know, different people, they talked of it, this guy, was the best, he actually came and, you know, looked at it, it was good, so. All right, so can I, can I please have a motion approving the health beat fitness equipment and landscape structures?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this point, I have, uh, uh, a, a resolution regarding salary and benefits for Lieutenant James Giantino and Lieutenant Jose Martinez, everyone's been provided with it, so I just want a motion to, you know, approve salary and benefit terms conditions for police lieutenants from June 1, 2021, to May 31st, 2025, that's the same as the police contract term, so I could at least have a motion to that, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Albert, or who's his name? Trustee Osborne, can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I think at this point, I won't keep us any longer, so, let's give it to them. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, we also, I need, uh, the, uh, I need a motion to authorize Mayor Curly to sign a dental agreement, uh, the plan for June 1, 2024, to May 31st of 2025, it's, 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 it's done every year, but just so we, we have the right to stay in that, that dental, uh, program, that's all. I get a motion to that, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion passes.